We is now called back to the board. Uh, roll call please.
Trustee Lewis.
Present.
Trustee Williams.
Here.
Trustee Jenkins-Bell.
Present.
Trustee Foulter. Trustee Thompson.
Can you quiet down? We're in session. We're in session. We're in session, please.
Quiet in the house.
Trustee Thompson.
Present.
Trustee Brooks.
Present.
Mayor Rudolph.
Uh, present, Madam Plurk. Uh, where we at? Bill payable attached to your approval is a listing of general operating expenses for the great village of University Park that occurred July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five through August twenty-sixth. Wow, twenty-twenty-five, some was gone. General Fund four oh four, four forty-six and forty-seven. Road and Bridge eleven thousand four hundred and twenty-two and forty-four. Town Center Fund four thousand six forty-one and fifty-four. University Golf Club thirty-two thousand two twenty-one and eleven. Capital Project Fund three hundred and twenty thousand eight twenty-seven ninety-four. Tiff five seven hundred ninety-five and twenty-five. And the Payroll Fund four thousand five thirty-four and zero six. With a grand total of seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight and eighty-one cents. Is there a motion? Move by Lewis.
Second.
Second by Williams.
Question.
Oh, Lord, here we go.
So this Capital Project. The Capital Project Fund. Three hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred and twenty thousand nine ninety-four. What are the Capital Projects?
I can get you the list of all of the projects. I don't have them off the top of my head from when we had the, uh, the budget. Yes, I can. And just also for transparency sake, I did email the board this afternoon. There were a series of questions that were sent to me by trustee, um, Foulter, and I did send those answers to the board, and I also included an attachment with explanation in red.
Can I could read those off?
So one of the questions that was asked was check number one oh six, six-ten. What property was appraised and what was the final appraised value? So that property was for an appraisal at five oh five University Parkway that I had done. So there were, um... So this is for five... My microphone was turned out. So this is for five oh five University Parkway. Um, this is for the old media center. It appraised at a hundred and eighty-five thousand. Uh, the second is check number one one three seven five nine. Uh, she said, "I did not see a game truck or go-karts at the back-to-school event. Please confirm." Yes, there were pictures, um, that Neva has of the game truck and the go-karts. They were located right outside of the mayor's office. And I did pay them that day, and I spoke with them. They were... And I actually put in that answer in the description that they were in a U-Haul truck and also the, uh, the game truck which the kids were in. Uh, the next one is check number one one three eight three zero. Why was the chimney repair done after the roof was replaced and not before? Was there leaking? So the chimney was completely separate from the roof. Um, I did speak with Chris Vargas as well. As the, uh, firm that completed the work, they said that those are two separate jobs. You don't have to do the chimney before the roof, um, and it did need to be tuck-pointed. Um, was there leaking? Not from that chimney. The next one is, uh, question number four. Check number one one three seven six one, Juan Coleman. What service did he provide? Contract is four thousand, but check is for five hundred. We still owe five hundred, question mark. If you look directly below that five hundred dollars on the bill run, you'll see another five hundred dollars that has the same name. Uh, he was paid. He had to be, as most vendors, for back-to-school events, you have to put a deposit down. So he received a deposit. It was for the Gospel Singer. That's who that was. The name of the group is in his name. After he performed, he was paid that day. Number five question. Check number one oh six, six-one-two. What are the three individual positions that receive business cards? It has that also on the bill run, uh, those names. I'm not gonna say it, but it's code enforcement. It is the, um, community outreach coordinator as well as the new HR employee. Number six question. Check number one one three eight four one. The work order shows work completed this period and the amount of seven thousand one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents. Why is the check for twenty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-four cents? This attachment is in the email, um, that I responded to. But if you look on the attachment, at the end of the grant and all of the paperwork that has to be done on the last page, is highlighted seven thousand one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents. That's only for one area. If you look at the very front of the attachment, you'll see a whole line. It is section six, and if you add all of those totals up, it comes out to twenty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-four cents. So that is in this attachment. I included all of this. Which number that you asked me? So the very last page of the attachment? No, it's at the very end of all of this. So it is page, let me see, yeah, page three of the one section. You'll see where you thought it was only seven hundred. That's only one line. And that is under this period completed. However, if you look at the other grant reporting, and you... I put it at the very front of the page. It is highlighted. It's line number six. If you go down and you add all of that up, which I did with the calculator, it comes to the second page, which is the total that they received their check for. And it gives you every single thing that was, um, done. It includes farmhouse interior demolition and fence, the vinyl windows, exterior rough carpentry, ramp repairs, interior trim works, spray insulation, removing and replacing siding. It goes down a whole list. But that is where that, that money came from. So that is also in the attachment. Next question.
So on, for the seven thousand one fifty-nine, it says work completed this period. It was work done previously, so that's where the seven thousand one fifty-nine come from. And then on that other page for... If you add up all of that to the twenty-five, it says from previous application. It doesn't say work that was...
Right, because they weren't paid. So this has to go through the bills. So they submitted, and it's always a little behind, but that is what this is for completely. And they were not paid as soon as they did the work. So it's kinda like...
I had the question, because it said, "Work completed this period." And then this one, it doesn't say work completed this period. It says work from previous application. So I can, I said that they wasn't paid for that previous as well, so, okay.
Yeah, just because the bill run, they'll do the work, they submit the bill. It may make the cutoff period, it may not. Then it'll go over to like the following month. So all of our bills are slightly a month behind, so to speak. So that's, that's where that came from. But that's also in your attachment. The next question. Number, question number seven. Home with disposal, street sweeping was done for three and a half hours. Did they sweep the entire community? It was not done in my area. So from, um, tenured employees at Public Works, they said this has been done since, as long as we've been having parades. That's what was told to me. Um, it's been done for years. They come behind them to sweep the candy up only. That's what they do. They don't, so they don't sweep the whole area. They follow behind us with the sweeper after, you know, it's over, and they come through and they just get the candy, and that, they said that's always been done. So when I got here, we just followed protocol. Um, the next one. Are all golf center expenses being identified in the university club? Total category on header page. Example, fleece oil, utilities, supplies. So my answer's a little long, but basically, um, and I wanna read exactly what I wrote to the board for efficacy. Uh, let me find it. So, "Most, but not all expenses are listed on the header for any specific department. They are broken out how they have been previously done in your budget. Example, building fixes for the fire department go under building maintenance. They're not broken out specifically by department. Um, or if it's a large expenditure and it's over a certain amount of money, it goes under capital projects, which can be found in the budget." And then it says, "Please see past budgets." If you would like items like gas expenditures broken out by departments, so all the departments, the gas expenditures go in there for, for, uh, building maintenance, it goes in that line item. But if you would like items like gas expenditures broken out by departments, we would have to implement a punch system for each specific driver. Otherwise, we would have no way of tracking gas by department because we have no way of tracking individual cars. Also, keep in mind, we were not financially solvent in years prior, and bills were not being paid for six months. So there was some delay in things, and things were placed in different categories. Uh, but I wasn't here for the inception of that. We are moving in the right direction, and this is something we are working towards the, in the future. So that's something we can definitely do. We've started breaking out, obviously, the budget, doing it in different ways, meaning now when you look at the budget, there's explanations on the side, which I think makes it a lot easier for not only the board but the public. We started moving different things, working with Chris to put them, as the board would like them, in specific areas. But if you would like that, that's something we can work towards. But there is difficulty in that, because like I said, if someone pulls up, if I pull up, how do you know that I pumped gas? Then if the fire department puts gas in the, in the, um, in their equipment, we have no way of tracking it that. But that is something I wanna work towards. It is very costly to do that. Um, some of the quotes I got were around thirty thousand dollars, but that is something I'm working towards. I'm also working on still putting in the, uh, cameras at the gas pumps, but we had some issue because of wiring. So we've been working on wiring in the fire department and PD. Um, that's been pretty costly, but we are moving in that direction.
So, thank you. So I did speak to, um, Chris yesterday about the budget and different financial things. So a lot of those, the bills that we receive, it does show like which department incurred that expense, like for utilities and for the com... All the different utilities and stuff. So I did mention that to Chris, that, yeah, it should be, you know, broken down for that particular department, because that really helps us understand what the true expenses is for that particular department and for also for the golf center. The golf center has its own inter, um, um, fund balance account. So they should be, that should be separate as well. So I did have conversations with him. He did, that is something that I said that we need to talk with the village manager and John Kraszprick about to figure out how to, um, how that needs to go to really account for. So it's something like you said that you're working on.
Few weeks ago, and, um, I believe we made around six thousand dollars for that event, just for the catering side. And I can give you that information. I don't remember the exact amount. Yes, so what happens is whenever they need to order food, the process is, um, the director who assists me with running the course, he comes over, he shows me the list, he tells me the event. I sign off on the very front page, which has the list of the food items, and I put my initials and date. Um, he also brings over the list for the liquor for the events. I sign off on it. Um, depending on what's going on, sometimes I will even have to pick it up, uh, because we had a situation where they didn't have certain liquor, we couldn't get it in time, and they only deliver once a week. Um, so someone came up with a last-minute event, I picked up liquor, but typically it is ordered. We have to keep a book by law with all of the orders, and, um, and I, that's the process. I review, I speak with him, I review the events, and then I sign off on the food. Where would, I'm sorry? I can give you, I can give you that. Yeah, 'cause we've cleared. How much is it so far roughly? So they can exercise without a contract, um, per state law. You're supposed, you should be working with three engineering firms, which we are now. Uh, so the board is aware. We do, do work with Robinson, which you all know, and I have them working on other projects. Uh, Antara was still on some projects, and also Baxter and Woodman. So when you, um, use three contractors, um, it actually makes you, you don't have to go out for a bid for five years. And counsel can jump in on that if they want, but that's, um, that's why.
Normally, if I could. Normally. No. Okay. Normally, the process with the escrow, if there's work to be done, but they want to complete the sale based on what code enforcement finds that's wrong, they have a list of pricing to get it done, and the people have to put up that amount of money until the work is done. And then, once it's finished, and it passes code enforcement, they get their money back.
Um, trustee, considering, uh, I, I, I want, I want you to bring your memory back to March of this year. I think it was March twenty-third when I had political thing. You were there. You was in a room of thirty... Uh, excuse me. Got a flow. Of this year, this election year. You were in a room with me when I spoke to those residents. Because we all felt that, you understood as well, when I introduced Matt Welch and his purpose as a legislative attorney. I also introduced two ordinances that he worked on. And you should see the billing, because I just noticed that the village manager emailed us. The, excuse me, I have the floor. You can tell me after I finish and I yield my time. But as of right now, I introduced him as the people legislative attorney. We also made it clear his duties and responsibilities. What's fogging me right now is, is that this is August one into September. And just all of a sudden, you don't forget what Montana and Welch does. It was explained. We were told how they got here, and we were told what they do. They're not spending an astronomical amount of money on this village. They're not billing us like crazy. Tonight, you're ready to pull two hundred and seventy-seven dollars or something than they did versus our village attorney, which is over fifteen thousand dollars. And sometimes, when you, that's beating, didn't wanna give a seven fifty versus a forty-five thousand dollar fee. So when we call, just like I explained at that beating creek that you showed up at. Remember with the cellphone? You didn't need one, because I told you, we had cameras in the back video on me and you. The purpose of there is to help us with legislative stuff. We initially had problems when it paid. And if you know there's some problem, I'm gonna put Montana and Welch and Bert Olson. So I don't understand why is this brand duty? Because you can call Bert Olson for no problem, but I can't. Bert Olson, he give me the five thousand dollars for the campaign. He gave it to you.
You are lying.
So he gave it to you. So at the end of the day.
Gave me five thousand dollars for my campaign.
Montana and Welch is the legislative attorney.
He gave me five thousand dollars.
Yes, he did.
Prove it.
You want me?
Prove it. No, no, wait a minute. Now let's, let's, let me... Because my son slash cousin was murdered on forty-seventh and, on forty-seventh and Ele... Was not the night of March twenty-third, 'cause we got, you won the election. That is when I talk. Okay, Mr. Trustee, but he didn't give me five thousand dollars. He didn't give me five thousand dollars. Bert Olson. Oh, my God. And what name did he give it to me? My husband and my sons paid for my campaign. Are you kidding me? He is such, he is such a liar.
So the check... So the check is regarding the park district.
Yeah, that's, okay, go ahead.
I wanna know what, what are they working on for the park district?
Go ahead, trustee, that's what I was...
So, so the check man pool is working on the park district. I wanna know, what are we working on? What are they working on for the park district? That's the question. That's what it said. It says telephone conference with trustee regarding park district review, analyzing park district code, review committee meeting. I didn't get any information on that. Did you get? And I think that's what...
Information from Bert Olson, when you all did it. What I'm trying to understand, this is why he's here. Because when Bert Olson did it, y'all had no problem. Not only y'all didn't have no problem, you filled almost eight, nine hundred dollars for it.
Y'all pulled the checks for Bert Olson.
Hold on.
They were pulled...
Well, you know, I just wanted to respond. You asked the question about...
She asked the question about the two seventy-seven. The question is, what, what is he working on for the park district? That's the question.
He's not, um...
That's what it said on the invoice.
No, it says to review. So it's not nothing being worked on. It was because questions was asked to them, which that's what they're for, the legislative attorneys. You called them and says, "This is on the agenda. This is what I see that's going on. I need for you to explain this and tell me if this is something that can be done." So just like we, it was stated that the, um, Bert Olson, Olson, all three of them, the, the attorneys cannot bill University Park for those services. That was information that we were able to receive from Montana and Welch, letting us know that information, that they cannot do that. So when you have, no, we wasn't. So we asked the question to say, "Is it allowed for it to be on bill payable?" That's part of that discussion to say, "No, I'm gonna look into the code. They cannot do that." So it's, so they're not doing...
She was just looking for... Are you looking for a response, Ms. Jenkins? That's all I'm asking. You said you didn't get any information that she asked. I didn't get none either.
But I think if you want a response, then you can get a response. But I know whenever I'm sending emails to Attorney Frazier asking questions, she does not send it to everybody. So I'm, I'm confused where saying that when we ask the question to the other...
I think we're all blind copied on there, so it don't be a, we're blind copied.
When she responds back to me, she doesn't send that information. So I'm just stating, I've asked Attorney Frazier several questions. She has responded back to me, and it hasn't been sent out to everybody. So why are you, is, now you're saying that you want the other attorneys? When any trustee asks a question, they have to send it to everybody, their response? That hasn't happened with the current attorneys. I just sent Attorney Frazier, uh, um, email last week. Did you all get that response? No, because she doesn't. I've sent her many things, and she doesn't respond back to the entire board. She answers my question, and that's just how it is. That's the same way with these attorneys. If we ask them a question and we need some more information or to get clarity on what exactly is on this, this agenda item, could you look into this for us? And that's exactly what they're doing. They're not doing any work to do. Do what?
Answer the questions that you need on the agenda?
I use both of them. Some things, that's why I use the legislative attorneys when it comes down to things of the board and the agenda that we have questions on. And I use the Bert Olson phone, all of them, when I have questions. Like I said, I just sent her a question last week, and she responded. So I utilize both. That's what they're there for, and that's what they're there for all of the board, is to utilize the legislative, if you have issues or concerns about any of the agenda items. For more clarity, you can use them. Or you can also go to these attorneys for other questions. And that's what I did with Attorney Frazier multiple times.
Okay. Well, thank you for clarification. Also, ma'am, may I be recognized?
If, if I could ask the question. You left this, this, this board yet. I didn't hear that.
I just pulled the check for clarification. Okay. Okay. All right. Also, I got a question to address, uh, trustee Brooks's statement. Um, I'm looking at March eleventh, twenty-twenty-five, a review and analyze code regarding ethics ordinances and limits on contributions to elected officials. Review and analyze comparative communities, um, ordinances regarding the same. Review and analyze city of Chicago ethics ordinance in attorney conference regarding the same. So when it comes down to ethics, I'm gonna say this. And I'm going to question this. Did he respond? Did he create a ordinance for the ethics and send it? Did he send the ethics, uh, ordinance to the village so we can put this in place? So... Uh, wait, what, I, I'm not through speaking. I'm not through speaking. Also, on the twenty-third of, the twenty-third of, um, what was it, March? Uh, when my son was killed, my cousin's son was killed. I was at University of Chicago Hospital IDing his body. So my thing is, is that I don't know, I can't, that part of my life was a blur until I buried him. So if I can't remember, I apologize. But the thing about this is, is when you talk about ethics and let's look at this, let's look at everything, and you wanna call me out on a five thousand dollar donation that I just called my campaign manager to send all of this information so she can verify this. And my thing is, is this, when it comes to ethics, I went to a court case down at Will County in July of this year. And when I went to the court case in July of this year, it was a personal matter. And with that personal matter, we, you know, we had to go to court. We left court, the attorney didn't show up. Then all of a sudden, the attorney mentions us back to the judge. So we had to go back upstairs to the judge, myself and, uh, a resident. And so, one... And so when we came down, he told us that he was representing one of our trustees on our board in a personal matter, and he sat with the Montana and Welch law firm. So I found that very troubling. I found that very astounding. And it was to me, it's not illegal. But I found it a conflict of interest. So when we are dealing with Matt Walsh, and we are talking about being ethical, and we're talking about being, being legal, and we're talking about all of these different things, I would like to do one thing tonight. Because of this, when we get through with general public, we'll move from there. Thank you. We'll move from there. We'll move from there.
Okay, so Mayor, I would like to respond. That same event, sir, that she's talking about, that this is becoming a political event, which you ready to pay the bills and go home? She sat there, and two people I know for a fact that were sitting there at that, at that, at that meeting greet, heard me say and read the ordinance out in full with trustee Kennedy Jenkins in the audience, and she clapped. And she was there for it, and she was ready to support trustee Brooks.
Oh, that was, I know what.
There, we had just mentioned a whistleblower protection, she still haven't read off that bill yet. We just asked for bills to introduce so we can bring it to the board. I didn't give it to you yet, Mayor. But it was just a simple ethics, and it was a simple whistleblower ordinance that we wanted to introduce to make it fair out here. So for this to happen and go through bills payable is ridiculous. And for those people who was in that room, because her sheep was on Montana's side, and she, she was among the individuals there. And I think it's hypocrisy to sit here tonight and argue over two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents. And I yield my time, sir.
Trustee Lewis.
Pay the bills, yes.
Trustee Williams.
Both sides.
Trustee Jenkins Bell. Trustee Foulter.
Both sides.
Trustee Thompson. Trustee Brooks. Mayor Rudin. Mayor Rudin.
You got some public comments?
Any? Anybody sign in?
Did anybody sign in for public comment?
The sheep was there. Mayor.
Hello, hello. Hello, hello. Okay, I'm up here. Hi, everybody. Good evening, community members, mayor, board. I am so happy that you all are in a discussion about this, because I'm just now finding out a little bit more into this, and I am furious myself, that's why I'm here. I have grave concerns and have very serious issues that I'm going to be asked to be investigated from the board. This Walsh, John Walsh, the Matt Walsh, that group, the law firm, I was approached by him, me and Donna Foulter, trustee Foulter, are in a civil slash criminal lawsuit right now, and I was approached by the law firm, which he told me he was representing Donna Foulter, and that, that bears the question, and that, that seems unethical to me. Because for one, why is he approaching me? Two, why is the trustee using village's attorney? Why, why, for a, for a personal matter? So did, did, with the Montana and Welch, yes, law firm. Yes, he said he was part of that law firm. So my question is, Mayor and village manager, did you guys know about this? Were you aware that this is going on? And then also, I'm gonna ask the board too, because do y'all know that she's using the village attorney to, for a public, for a personal matter? So that's the question I would like answered. And also, yeah, you shouldn't be, that's unethical to be using for a private case. And so I know our tax dollars is not paying for this. So that's going to be a question. So Ms. Scott, in the morning, can I please have a meeting with you first thing in the morning? Because I'm gonna want to discuss this whole thing, investigate, I want an investigation started, and a swiftly launched whatever needs to happen with this law enforcement officials to deal with this, because that shouldn't be happening. Am I correct? Can somebody answer me on that? And I, and I do have proof of that, and all of the information is right here. What, is there any legality to this, and is that unethical practices, and does the board know, and who okayed this? Like, and I want this investigated.
I, I.
So I, I, I would, I could, I, I would like to. And, and that's what I wanted to. So, no, I, I wanted to answer, to respond that myself can retain any attorney that I want, which I have. The legislative attorneys is not being paid from this village to handle any case that I have. So no, it's not taxpayer money, it's nothing. And that's not something that, they don't have to have approval to be an attorney for anybody that's up here. Only if it has something to do with a village case. This has nothing to do with a village case. They're not being paid by the village. They have a retainer with me, separate. That's why it's Donna Foulter, it's not trustee Foulter. That's, that we're going against. So. How is it? There's, there's plenty, there's plenty individuals up here that use, I know that the mayor used Bert Oderson. I know that Clerk Jones has used Bert Oderson. So there's plenty people can use the same attorney, as long as it's separate, in which this is. So no, there is no funding coming from this village, because I am always very specific and make sure that any type of financial stuff that's going on here in this village, I am up on it. So I would have never, ever done that, and that has never happened.
Deborah J. Strout. Positive Strout.
Good evening, mayor, board, those present, those viewing.
Any, any homeowners association, so if you're part of an HOA, whether it's Rustin Oates, Rustin O'West, Sandra Collin, Monterey, any of those, that's what we're looking for.
Is this limited to the residents of those HOAs?
It's limited to the residents, because they're the ones having to deal with it. Yes, I created it. Well, it should be the residents that are part of that, because those are the people that are paying those assessments and looking for work orders and things to be done, and we're trying to address those issues.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. That means the only people present will be the residents of those HOAs.
It really should, because those are the people that is concerning. We're looking for the HOA residents, the property managers, the board of trustees for each of those HOAs. That's who we're looking to talk to.
Okay, so the part about municipal leaders.
Of course, we are gonna be, you, the main purpose is for the residents of the HOA.
Okay, all right. May I also ask, on this flyer, the mobile food pantry for Georgia, Bradley, and Wilmington? Would University Park have a mobile food pantry? Or when was the last time they had a mobile food pantry? Okay, is there a possibility that University Park?
Yes, absolutely.
Well, thank you for both of these flyers, for the information on both. And I'm gonna take the opportunity to say that on the thirty-first of this month, I will be a resident of this heart for South, University Park community for fifty-two years.
I still.
I still got to be.
I'm not that old. Do my math. But thank you. And I say that to say, not only am I still desiring to be part of this community for volunteering. So at some point in time, I know I filled out applications in twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five regarding volunteering on any board, any commission, that I, as long as God is willing, so am I to volunteer. I'd like to see that surface at some point. I don't know what the delay may be, it really doesn't matter. But I would like to see that come to fruition on an agenda at some point in time, that not just me, there are other businesses in the community that have education, talent, skills, knowledge. And they too want to be a part of this community. I've been a volunteer since nineteen seventy-seven. I know somebody else wants to volunteer to assist this community in any positive endeavor. Anything positive and constructive, I know there are. I've spoken to quite a few. So with that being said, I hope everyone has a safe and happy Labor Day.
Awesome. And with that being said, is there a motion for adjournment? All in favor? Oppose?